And I'll offer a prayer this morning and then we'll stand for the pledge. Lord, I'm just grateful for this morning and the opportunity to convene this meeting. Lord, to take up the business that comes before us. We seek your wisdom, Lord, and as we seek that wisdom, then we pray that we'll be obedient to that. And we will be able to make the best decisions for those who live here in Lakeland County. So as we take up our work this morning, we're just grateful that you're a part of this this morning. And Lord, again, just guide, lead, and direct us in all that we think, say, and do this morning. And as a result of that, it would honor you. We just give you thanks in your son's name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A B C. All right, we have no minutes this morning. We have banking, institution bids, and what we'll do here is we'll open those. And then we will give those to Christie. And then we'll ask Christie to put together a summary. And then we will take those up next Tuesday. So Eric, if we have bank bids there, you'll probably don't need to go into a lot of detail because I'm sure there's going to be variables that we're going to have to compare. Interest rates, fees, minimum balances. And Lance, I think you're the only banker in the room. I think. And if you want copies, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. I don't see any other banker in the room though at this moment. If you are, shout it out. All right, Eric.
I'm ready.
Okay, so Lance, would you like to copy those?
At some point.
Okay.
Just let me see all of them.
Can I just email them to you?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, not in a rush.
Okay. Any others?
That's it for Lance.
All right, next thing we have to open would be the bids for the trailers. We have two out there. We have a camper trailer and a cargo trailer.
I've got two for the smaller one here.
The smaller being the way mark across?
Yeah, the way mark.
Way mark.
Yeah.
I didn't see them.
Two hundred.
Was that Danny Rhodes bid?
Yeah. I don't know this. Danny may not even know yet.
Oh, I've seen Danny bid on everything. I think it was always the submitted a little bit.
I guess nobody else did.
You want to always make sure something was there, didn't you?
That's right.
You bet. At least you had something over.
Crossroads, Zinger, Command, thirty foot, thirty-three foot camper.
Yep.
Fifteen hundred. Twenty-nine seventy.
You're going the right direction, Eric.
Mm-hmm.
The way back slip, eight fifty. Thirty ninety-five. Fifteen oh-two.
Gentlemen, you want to table them or you want to make a motion? And I probably need a motion on the bank bids to table those.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to table the bank bids at this time for further review.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion second to table the bank bids for further review and further discussion. Seeing none, in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. It's tabled, so we'll have that on next week's agenda. All right. Now, I would entertain a motion or to either table the bids for review on the trailers or I would entertain a motion to move them.
We have two separate bids there. I would like to make a motion to go ahead and accept on the smaller trailer.
Okay.
But I would like to table the camper trailer for further review. If I can make a double motion there.
Let's do them one at a time.
Motion to table the thirty-three foot camper trailer.
Okay, you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
You have a motion second to table the bids for review on the camper trailer. Any further discussions? Seeing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, I would entertain a motion to table or move for the cargo.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept the bids as presented for the cargo trailer.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we had a bid from Lance Cartwright in the amount of one thousand twenty-five dollars. Is that your bid, Joe, for that one?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
For your motion?
Yeah, from the motion.
All right, we have a motion second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Sold. All right, we'll notify. All right, next item on the agenda would be the senior tax freeze applications. I know we have.
Do you want to make copies or do you want me to make copies and I'll get them?
I have it here at nine, but if you'll go ahead and give it to me, I can get started making copies.
Looks like we have two hundred and eight on the senior tax freeze stuff. I'd make a motion to approve those at this time.
I'll second it.
You have a motion second to approve the senior tax applications as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Yes, sure.
We don't have a cover sheet on us. What is it? Or do we have one?
I've got a question, gentlemen. I don't want to interrupt. I'm Lance Cartwright. Do you want me to wait till the end of the meeting or can I give a check now or?
Um, do you have anybody mind on my cheeks on here?
I've got the title. If you want to go pay Christie for it, do it. Tell you what, she's going to use this.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
It's a pleasure. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're good.
You were going to run him down there?
I'm guessing he knows.
Well, what's going to say?
I've got the title.
The title's over in your office, not in here.
No, it's in here actually.
Oh, well, you can run it all down there.
Yeah, she's got the title.
While you're in halfway break, could I get a clarification as to why my bid wasn't accepted? Was it too low?
Not sure. I just, with what was in there and stuff, I would just like to look over them just a little bit for some clarification on it for my own personal deal to see.
What are you clarifying, Joe?
I'm just wanting to clarify with that trailer and everything with some other stuff that I have here and that I'm going to look at. Actually, it may be in my, oh, my dead note is right here. Some other printout stuff that I have right here. I just want to kind of cross-reference at this time. Not saying that it won't be accepted or anything like that. I didn't even see your name on there. I just looked at the numbers.
No, I think that was my last name that was on there.
Maybe, and I didn't even look at the names. I just looked at numbers at that time for myself. That's why I'm on the table to have a cross-reference.
We'll finish up this transaction and we'll pick back up with new business. All right, Linda, thank you. We're on senior tax freeze applications. And I think I happen to know two individuals in the front row that I had conversations with regarding their application. And I think when we discuss the senior tax freeze applications, we discuss in general terms. We don't discuss in individual terms. So while there might be unique circumstances or questions on any application, we want to keep those very general in nature. So with that, Diane, I'll call on you if you'd like to address the commission.
Good morning, Mr. Scherz. Appreciate being heard. Like Randy said, we have talked, Randy and I have talked on the phone. We have talked in person. We have talked via email concerning our application. So some background for you, Joe and Eric. We sold our house that we've lived in for thirty years, which is a two-level house with stairs, to go to a one-level handicap accessible so we can age in place. Might have gotten ahead of the game a little bit, but we're going to be ready. So when I submitted my quote-quote renewal application for the senior tax credit, I outlined all that and talked to Randy in person when I brought it in. And he said, you'll have to wait until next year to be eligible because you have to own the house as of the first of January. I'm like, okay. So then I researched and read and looked. We've had several conversations about it. I went to the state representative's office. They do not outline the criteria, as you guys know, for the county. The county sets their own stipulations. They said, this is what we passed. You implement it as you see fit and, you know. So my argument, for lack of a better word on this, is that under the bill, the Senate Bill seven fifty-six, it says that the eligible credit amount will be given for the year in which the taxpayer's initial credit year. So that was our last year. We applied. We were approved for that initial tax credit on our home in Rosewood, on Rosewood. So to me, we've met that criteria. Eligibility sixty-two, obviously, we are there. We've met that eligibility. You cannot claim more than one primary residence. We're not doing that. We're not paying taxes on Rosewood this year. We're going to pay taxes on the new house. So we've met that criteria. To my knowledge, there was nothing that said you had to own the house as of the first of January during the initial credit year, which, I mean, we did, but I don't remember that on the application. It says the county can adopt reasonable procedures to implement it. But the reason the bill was enacted was to benefit the seniors. So I don't think we are the only seniors going forward who are going to be moving to accommodate their aging lifestyle. People are going to be downsizing. People are going to be going to one level. And I understand that that's the policy, but that doesn't benefit the seniors as they age, as the bill was enacted to do. So I'm just asking that you reconsider, respectfully reconsider our application, and then look at the policy. If it is a policy that you have to own it as of the first of the year, then I implore you to relook that policy and think about the benefits that you're giving to the senior as we move forward with this. And I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, Diane, thank you. And we have about six or seven that we have to review for different reasons. So we'll continue to look at those and make a decision before the end of the month. Give any questions for Diane?
Don't believe I do. Appreciate you coming in.
All right, Diane, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet, guys.
Broke with you.
You bet. Guys, have a good day.
Next item on the agenda is general county business. And I had received an email maybe yesterday from the Historical Society. And before we take up general business, I'll let Noah, we can let you have the floor. I'm not sure what you want to share, but we're glad you're here. And tell us what's on your mind.
I actually came to check out the display cases, see how you're doing on those. But anyhow.
Let me speak to that. This one down here, I've received a quote on it. And it's more than what we will want to do at this time. It was like thirteen or sixteen thousand dollars. And I just can't justify that cost. So maybe we can come up with a more creative, secure way of displaying Lakeland County's history. But that was just a little more than I thought. I mean, actually, it was a lot more than I thought it would be.
I think so. But since I've been here, Dr. Carmichael owns the old Stagecoach building that sits out on sixty-four. And he's turned eighty-one. He's wanting to do something with it. And what he's wanting to do is move it into a public area. And the reason for that is that he wants it to be taken care of. And so moving it to a public ground like a park or out here on the courthouse or the VFW or something, it would never be sold. So I came to talk about that for just a minute. That building was built about eighteen forty, eighteen forty-five. It sat out on Route sixty-six. The original landowner still owned that land. With the advent of next year is the one-hundredth anniversary of Route sixty-six. It's a pretty important part. It's probably the oldest remaining home or it's actually a Stagecoach Inn is what it was. And it's probably the oldest remaining one along Route sixty-six. But his dad moved it in nineteen eighty-two out on sixty-four. And now he's wanting to move it off of his private land to a public land. So I've been going around trying to find, well, where could we put this thing, you know? So I talked to the park board. They got with me yesterday. But then I thought, well, we had talked about doing something about the old jail out here. I thought, well, could we move it out here by the courthouse too? That might be something we could do. But anyhow, that's the only reason I came. I have a company coming in. They're going to look it over. That's what they do for a living, is restore old homes. They're going to look it over, see if it's worth while moving it, give us an estimate on what it would take. And then it's so close to next year. I thought, you know, if we could put it along Business Route sixty-six, it would be great if we could move it out to the Civic Center or even out to Boswell Park or something. But anyhow, I just managed to do that. And I brought a little write-up I had done talking about it. It's really interesting because Abel Benton built that home. And then he died one month after the Civil War started. And he left his wife and eight kids. And his wife actually started the Lonesome Hill Cemetery. You guys probably know how historic that is too. And she raised and made kids. And she actually fed soldiers from the Union side and the Confederate side in that, in that old Stagecoach. A lot of people, one guy said, I've gone by that thing a thousand times and I never knew anything about it. So I just thought I'd bring a little bit of information, talk about that, tell you what he's looking for. And check on the showcases and that's all I got.
Noah, I hope you're successful with this project. There's more history there than I had remembered. I remember where it was at prior to Dr. Carmichael moving it. But that was kind of a long time ago now.
Yeah, I was amazed when I read about, they did a newspaper article when he moved it and he couldn't find anybody that was really interested in it. But we are, and you guys know this for a fact, any time when the old jail got tore down, everybody in the county just threw a fit, you know? But this is one last piece. There's not many of these left. I know Warren Hoffman's house is actually an old home. It was built by the Polkright family back in the early eighteen hundreds. But this one, to me, has got more history because it's set around Route sixty-six. And you guys know how valuable Route sixty-six is to tourists coming to our town. So I think it would be an excellent draw. It's just a matter of finding the location. I think on Route five or someplace through town where people would come in at one stop, look at it, and maybe we could turn it into a visitor center or something like that where they could come in and it's. I think it's, I know it was probably the oldest one left in our county. I doubt if we have anything from the eighteen forties left around here. In fact, Eric may not even know it, but we're his brick farm stories out there. That was an old baseball diamond.
Yeah. I had a guy come out last week and he spread his dad's ashes there because he wanted, it was about the old ballparks.
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to him and it was amazing because it was a ballpark. But now it's all concrete. I don't know if he found even a little spot of the house to put his dad's ashes on or something. But a lot of people complain that we're losing on history. We actually, my mom and wife went to Camden County last week. There was about eight of us from different historical societies met and came in there and talked. And we all had the same problem. One of the biggest problems we got is financing. We're not supported by the city. We're not supported by the county. We're not supported by the state. So it's always an issue or problem. And that's one problem I have there is these, I just want to ask, you know, hopefully the county can come up with enough donations to move it. Right now, I have no idea what it's going to take to move it and rebuild it. So that's something I hope to have in a few weeks. I hope to have it today, but it didn't come through. So anyhow, I appreciate it.
Noah, thank you. Thanks for what you do to keep history alive.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Noah.
Have a good day.
All right, gentlemen, back in general county business. No? Okay. You probably are aware, there's, the Governor Pehoe has instituted a, what's referred to as the Missouri Blue Shield Program. And there's an application process that we should consider to submit if I'm memory is correct. I think I've seen something online, as I've done a little research. I think there's been ten million dollars budgeted for this. So there would be a grant process for those communities and counties that are a Blue Shield Program certified. Then we would be able to submit applications for whatever that might look like. I don't have any details on that. Sheriff Frederick had brought me some thoughts on it. And it really starts with us adopting a resolution, and then there's other parts that go into that resolution. So I wanted to bring it to the commission this morning for us to consider. I can't imagine there would be any reason why we wouldn't do it. We just need to get a resolution drafted and get the application submitted. So are there any thoughts, any objections?
No, I believe it sounds like, I mean, something we ought to consider for sure and look into.
Okay. I will pursue the ordinance, the, the resolution. I know of another county, they were one of the first fifteen. I'll, I'll look and see what theirs might look like. And then we'll get something drafted and get it back here Tuesday of next week. Okay? Good. All right. And then, let's see. I believe that's probably all I had. I would like to discuss the senior tax freeze at some point, some of, some of these while we're here, but we can do that later. Public comments items listed on the agenda. Randy?
So I just wanted to give you an update on the Bennett Spring siren build-out. We've tried two or three different things to make those two sirens hit the repeater, and we've been unsuccessful so far. However, yesterday, we mounted a, an amplifier on the repeater, which I thought was a brilliant idea. So we moved the output from twenty-six percent to ninety-five percent, which is triple the signal going out, the power going out. So hopefully tomorrow when we do the test, we'll have total success by pushing that signal out. We've tripled the power pushing it out. That is the less expensive way to fix this. You know, the more expensive way, not necessarily more expensive, but the hard-to-hit parts way would be to put a repeater down there. You know, we've had had parts for the repeater down there backward, backward, backward. So don't know when they're going to come in. If this deal works tomorrow, then I suggest that we leave it alone. And by putting a meter on it, they verified this morning that it, that it is, it's tripled the signal going out, the push going out. And the other thing I learned in this process, which this is for a later day maybe, is that our antenna on the Mercy Water Tower is on, is less than halfway up on the tower, hanging off the side. And it's hanging off that side. So, you know, the idea is if we get money ahead and, you know, if we can, I'd like to move that antenna if we can get permission from Mercy, and I think we can, and the City of Lebanon, I know we can there, is to put that antenna on top of the water tower. That's where it should have went in the beginning. There's brackets up there for it. And, and it moves up another two hundred feet. And then if we have bad weather, you know, we're more apt to push that signal out to where it needs to go, you know, Conway, to Bennett, to Stowe. So I never knew that that antenna was in that position. All I see is the coax from the bottom up. And, you know, I thought it was higher than that, but it's less than halfway up on that tower. Problem is, I don't get a tire climber to do that, and it's going to cost us, you know, new coax. Right now, ballpark figure, twenty-five to five thousand dollars to move it up to the very top if we have permission from everybody. And I think the, the partners that we'd have to get permission from would be City of Lebanon and Mercy. So we'll see how it goes tomorrow. But I want you to keep in mind that, you know, if that signal's pushed out tomorrow and we're successful, that's all well and good because it's going to be a beautiful day tomorrow, we hope. You know, but that may change if we have, you know, a T-stone drop down between here and those sirens down there. So we need to do what we can to keep that power strong and push that signal out, you know, in bad weather. And but I think, I have a good feeling that it's going to be good tomorrow, successful. We'll see.
So Randy, Noah always have questions. So tell me a little bit about that amplifier. Was that one we had in our possession, or is that one that the siren installers had?
Neither one.
Neither one, okay.
That one came from RCS. That's one of their in-house amplifiers.
Okay.
Amps are also extremely hard to get right now. They had one there that we could try, and, you know, we haven't purchased it yet. Don't even have a price for it yet. You know, I, I think I know about what it's going to cost. But that's one they had in-house, a good one. Our installer, I, I think I know where you're coming from on that question. Our installer is still waiting on parts for the repeater. And, and they would like to go that route. So.
So do you know the frequency that this is transmitting on?
I do, I do have it in my truck.
Would you care to share that with me sometime?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And then unrelated to that, but I was curious, as I was looking through fuel invoices yesterday, the, is Ops Three the red truck?
I believe that's right.
Okay.
The full.
So we, yeah. So we using that quite a bit now?
No, I don't think quite a bit.
It just seemed like the fuel charges would be, unless we made trips in it.
We have, we have went to Springfield a couple of times and picked up, one time we picked up water, and another time we delivered to Conway with water. And he may have made one more delivery. I can't recall. But he keeps the, he's supposed to keep a log on when it, when it goes on a trip or even to Springfield.
You might share that with us as well, that log, if you don't care. That's, that's any questions on here. Keep us posted on that siren, but I would like to know what frequency they're pushing out there.
It's UHF. I don't, I'm almost to it.
You might get Jeff to climb the tower over at the hospital.
Yes, I remember the fiction. One time.
One time?
You do it even once. I'm all for that.
All right, any other public comments items listed on the agenda? If not, we'll go into routine business. Then do you have any payroll change form? While you're signing off on those, was there any questions on the warrants that were paid?
Anything good there?
Eric, any, any questions from you?
No.
I don't see your sacrifice or the one deal.
When you guys go and do that and retrieve some information that we might discuss regarding Road and Bridge, I'll work that.
Yeah.
Randy, have you ever put a Yagi on that thing, just pointing it straight up at Bennett Springs?
What?
Put a Yagi antenna and point it straight at that tower.
I think we tried that.
I mean, that, it triples your output in that single direction.
Yeah. I believe they tried that last week, Jeff. They tried two or three different ones.
And you can test it without setting the transmitter signs off. Just don't send the peel tone. Just hook a radio up on that same frequency, just key to mic. If the, if the receiver picks it up and doesn't activate, you've got to say. You don't have to wait until twenty or thirty to test it.
Yeah, they did test it, and it did hit.
If it hits, it'll, it, I mean, peel takes a little bit of juice, not much.
But it hit last time too, when they did the test.
Okay, now, so that is what you would pay.
I see Eric throw right where I ordered the receiver for it, but I don't. They will not show you.
Lance, just for information, these are, I guess generally we might refer to them as consent items.
Okay.
It's nothing.
Okay, well, that sounds good. I just, I was just sticking around.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know when I first sat back there and it's like, hey, what are those guys doing up there? They're chucking all this paper around. But these are like payroll change forms, abstracts from the office holders, or some property add-ons, things of that nature.
Sounds good. Well, I forget back, I mean, I just wanted to say, hey, I was wearing my bank and my Chamber of Commerce hat today, so. And I think I met everybody. Eric, I'm, we've met way back when.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. I didn't know if you remember. Anyway, so anyway, good to meet you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, in other county business or general county business, there's a tack meeting tomorrow at two PM in Miller County. I'll be going to that. If you want to ride with me, but I'll have to push something out really quick if you're going to, because I need to put a legal notice out.
I won't be able to attend myself, but I've got more on my schedule.
Okay. Not a lot going on at that meeting. I think they're reviewing the bylaws to the organization. And there's been a couple of changes in the makeup of that at the request of different counties as far as who's appointed. And then I'd like to bring up just general discussion about Road and Bridge. First thing I would bring up is we had, we bid out our fuel, probably it was over a year ago. And at that time, there was quite a, quite a significant difference in the two companies that submitted the bid. But recently, as those invoices have been reviewed, I'd asked for a, for a summary. And if you look at the two companies that we buy fuel from, one of them on their dye diesel for the, for what we bought from them in the first quarter, January, February, March, something to April and May, the average price, now keep in mind that this might be not inclusive of some of those smaller fees that are on there. I, I didn't look at how this report was generated. So this just may be the, the one number, that, that first number, so much per gallon. Then they've got a couple of fees that they, that they add on to there. Eric is probably the wizard on this. So Eric, if I misspeak, you can stand to correct me. But what I found is in April on dye, it's two thirty-six three nine for one vendor. And two thirty-four, no, that's, that's not right, two thirty-six twenty-five for the other vendor. So what prompted me for this is when, when we realized we were having maybe some issues just being able to fill the trucks up at the one place, I thought, hmm, you know, are we, are we losing money by going to the other place? But by this, gentlemen, I don't think we're losing anything.
It doesn't appear to be for what you got there.
Yeah, so for whatever it's worth, until we rebid it, which maybe we should at this point, but that gap doesn't exist. But at one time, that gap was pretty, pretty significant.
Pretty prominent, what I can remember from, like you said, sitting back in those seats. It was a big difference.
So I was, I was kind of like, okay, my, my curiosity's been satisfied. Because I was, I was concerned that we were, we were paying more for the convenience of, of, of not having to deal with the equipment that wasn't working properly. So anyway, I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's good, because we have, like you said, with their equipment stuff at the one place, it's not, it wasn't working properly. Uh, I've still been having some dealing with the guys on that as well, had another conversation on that this morning. I was having some issues, but I talked to a couple of other guys that yesterday did not have any issues. So I had a few of them get together and have a little training session this morning, so.
Yeah, it seemed like there was a workaround on the, on the faulty equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Um. In light of this, um, you know. Doesn't seem like that's really an issue and then, but, but maybe we do need to put it out, back out for bid.
Right. Yeah, I think we should.
Okay. When Mike Chief gets back, then I will have her put out that, that legal notice and maybe just see what will start coming in. Okay, then the other thing I'd like to talk about on Road and Bridge is the, uh, uh, how are we doing on, on culvert installation? I, I seen, I mentioned this, Joe, in passing, I seen, uh, who's, how, how are we, how are we, um. Uh, working through, uh, our, uh, projected work schedule on, um, on culvert installation? I'm curious, I'm kind of out of the loop on that.
Right, yeah, I haven't actually, I've got the book there on my desk on where they had started out prior to the beginning of the year for budgeting purposes. And where the projected work was assigned and through there, I looked through some other books. John and him replaced some pipes and stuff yesterday, we got three, I think, installed yesterday. Some crossroad culverts and stuff installed that had been replaced, it was on their schedule to do so. Um, I don't know exactly where we're at as far as how many and how close to that schedule that was projected before that. Um, some of those pipes, I don't believe need to be replaced, some of them don't even need to be dug up. If they had the proper care and take a little bit more to clean those things out. Uh, which is something that's still moving on with process and it's going to take a little bit of time. You know, to look into a little bit more and once we get somebody on track with that, maybe we'll take care of that a little better.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, because when I seen four going out to one road, it obviously that was a project we had, we had scheduled. But, uh, I, I couldn't find it, I, I didn't take the time to look very thoroughly this morning. But I was just curious how we're, how we're dealing with that. Um, can John give us a list of what, uh, that, I can't find my list, so.
Right.
Can John give me a list of what he plans on replacing?
I would say that he should be able to.
Okay.
I don't see why Mike couldn't.
Okay. All right. Uh, other, other business. Public comments items not listed on the agenda. No, okay, all right, um, Lenny, do you have anything?
Just as a side note, we did get our sales tax, um, and for April it was down.
Yeah. Seeing that, did it steal down?
All right, let's work through, uh, uh, some of these senior tax freeze applications. And, uh, and I'm not, I'm not mentioning names, I'll mention the circumstances surrounding those. And then, um, we need to start wrapping, wrapping these up. So, um, I'll start with one. Application was submitted, uh, of course, the process here is, uh, they're accepted at the counter. Uh, the qualifying, the qualifications are what we know. And then at that point, uh, then they go through the vetting process. So typically they'll go to Mike Chief, they'll go to the assessor's office and then back to, uh, to Mike. And so in that, uh, process, if there's something that's, uh, looks like it would not fit the criteria. Then it's, it's flagged for review. And I've been looking at some of these, trying to work through as many as I can, um, just making determinations. The eligibility, eligibility here, if, if that's the case, if there's any other, uh, cer- circumstances. So I want to present some of these this morning so that we can start to wrap this up. So the first one is, and, and this is a visual of the property. Uh, that they want to claim the, um, the senior tax credit on. See if these are the same one. So we have two here. So this one, uh, I thought the way that I might be able to approach it, because when somebody signs the document that says. Um, that they're affirming that all of that is true, um. But in that case, I thought it would all ask for three months of utilities, because it looks like there's no one that might be occupying that house. And there's some suggestion that, uh, maybe the owner of the property has multiple, multiple houses, so. I mean, it's very possible somebody does occupy that house, but that, uh. That one came up.
So how would we get the verification failure? Why didn't get that?
Well, what I would do, Joe, is, uh, give them a courtesy call and just ask them to submit utility, um. Bills for that, for that address. And, and just ask them, uh, because there's maybe two properties that, that show up under ownership in that name. Maybe, maybe we got the wrong one, okay? Uh, but before I make the call, let's.
Yeah.
Just want to, want you to know what some of these look like.
Got to have one, want you to call for that.
I'll go with three.
Yeah, because it very well could be, like you said, there could be two different structures on there, two houses.
Yeah. So, oh, oh, um. And I don't know why we would have this one, but here's one, which, uh, it's, uh. It's a new, it's a new application, it's a new home. That, uh, apparently was just either completed or put on the assessment roll. And it had to be on January one, if that's our criteria, and that's what we established, and I'll, I'll go to a different document in a minute. But that was one that was flagged for that reason. Is that the new home?
Ooh.
And here's, uh, another one that was sent over for that reason. I don't know why those were sent, sent.
So it builds a new home on the properties?
Yeah, so on that, uh, Joe, that's one that I, I remember, it's, uh, so, uh, was that a, a renewal?
That was the new. New application.
Okay, so.
Both of these are new.
Okay, then that would be, would be similar.
And the homes weren't completed until?
So if you look at the tax year, uh, the homes would have been completed and occupied on January one of twenty-five. They might have been in progress in twenty-four, but they would not be assessed at the full value un- until this tax year.
Okay.
And I, and I don't know that there's any objection to, um, to those, other than they need a courtesy call. Uh, if they were believing that they were going to be frozen at anything prior to twenty-five.
Let's see, it's out. Purchased and then built a new one. Purchased the property. Why don't we, that's just giving you another piece, giving me another piece of the puzzle there, that's a. Though that'd be in July, that group, that could have been any, by one.
I think twenty-twenty-fives it is.
All right, so I will visit with the assessor's office on those. Uh, there's three of them here that, again, I don't know why they were kicked over. Uh, so there may be other reasons as I take them back, but these were due to age, their eligible year would not qualify them until twenty-twenty-five. So those look like as a group, and this one I don't understand, but I will visit along with those. One of the applicants, uh, would not qual- be eligible this year, but the other one is, so I don't know what the, what the, um. Why that one was, was kicked back over here. But, but those three and this one are kicked back for, um, age. Not being sixty-two or older until twenty-five.
For this year. That was one of our deals.
You have to be, you know, el- you have to be sixty-two years of age, own the home, pay taxes on the home. And o- occupy the home. But the eligible year is when they, when they turn sixty-two, so if they turn sixty-two in twenty-five, that would be their eligible, eligible year. So I don't know why we got those back over here for review, but I've been.
I was trying to look at there.
That's kind of what I'm wondering.
Yeah, just kind of.
But Mike would, Chief would like it cleaned up when she gets back, however. Would try, Mike, yes.
Get that off her file.
Yeah, like I say, one. Yeah.
Is he still alive or?
Let's.
I mean, he's, he's there.
Mm-hmm. Well, and she's. Right there.
And you see, somebody's asking the same question, wanting to call sixty-four.
That was me, just.
And that's where my mind was.
Because he, and, and both are on there, right? You know.
And was that a new or a renewal?
This is a new applicant.
Okay, okay, so that very well could be, that was in the same stack as, as these when it came over. So that could be that explanation.
Let me share. So I'm saying the names are both on that deed, so I, yeah, I don't know why that one was flagged. So.
Cause I was thinking maybe.
Why wouldn't we go twenty-twenty-four?
Uh, to age this year, I think they highlighted the, this, this right here. That, that was my, my question, Eric, but to Joe's observation, if that, if the co-applicant is deceased. But I don't know why the name would be on there, if that's the case, does it say individual or joint up here?
Says joint.
Yeah, yeah, so the question I'm going to ask would be.
Still alive.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-four, yes, right?
According to what we've established, yes, yes.
Yeah, there was nothing, no taken here about being deceased or anything like that, and everything is on, everything's all on there, so.
Okay, now, um, I have two, the, the, what we heard this morning. Uh, we have two that fit that criteria, I have another one. Uh, they applied, uh, last year, they sold that property, moved, purchased this property on twelve-twenty-four, obviously last year. And, uh, so, um, they did own the new property on January one of this year, but they sold the property, um. Previously, uh, so. Um, I think for the sake of moving some of these through, we, we need to, need to determine, uh. What our guidelines were, and, and part of the background on this would be that, um. On surface level review, you would think it would be relatively easy to process these. It was just, it was just, uh, a change in the month or day or whatever, and maybe that's relatively innocuous. But then you have things like all the programming that goes into it, and you have deadlines that we have to meet to be able to submit that form. Eleven A. to the auditor or wherever it goes, so we, we have to have a date to begin and we have to have a date to end. And so I have two, we heard one this morning, and I think that is similar. And, uh, as, as we know, as we heard, um, the legislature enacted this. It was left up to the counties to adopt their ordinance or by petition. And, uh, it would be dealt with at the county level. So when we, uh, opened up this process last year, we said you have to be the owner of the property on January one. It can't be the fifteenth of April, it can't be when we close the applications. And, and, uh, so that's, that's what we established, and that's how, what we've maintained consistently. Uh, in the inaugural year last year and what we're being asked to consider this year. Other counties can do it however they want, however, um, you know, just some research, uh, and this was just one. Uh, you know, here's one from, uh, uh, the county up, uh, in the St. Louis area, or Kansas City area. Um, and, um. It says. What if I sell my property and buy a new home? A change in ownership of a property would require a new application to qualify for the program instead of new freeze on the tax bill. It's, it's logical, you're freezing one house at one value, you sell it, uh, so either you're paying a partial year. Or you allow the, the individual that's purchasing the, the property to, uh, maybe benefit from the tax freeze. Which I don't think is a reasonable thought even. Or do you prorate that out, and how do you do that? And then if you buy new property in the year, uh, and you go to the closing table and, and, and you're freezing that property. How, how do you set the tax for that year? So I, in all the conversations I've had, uh, I maintain that when we established our guidelines. You, it was, uh, you, you were the owner of the property on January one. So I have those, those two, and, uh, and I think, uh, again, respectfully, we need to make a courtesy call with, uh, with an answer. I think that's why, why we, um, received the present. make a courtesy call with, uh, with an answer, I think that's why, why we, uh, received the presentation this morning. Was, was an, an appeal to the commission. And we listened to that appeal, and now we have to make a decision.
So. Basically, what we're saying is, this one here is new freeze on the new place is twenty-five.
Correct.
Yeah.
And if we were to deviate from our criteria, then it would be, okay, what day do you establish? Or else it ju- it just becomes any day of the year, and that's impossible with all the reporting, programming deadlines, when the tax statements go out, I mean, it would just be a nightmare to be able to, uh, correct any of these. And, and our programming costs are not insignificant, at least in our initial year. Programming costs were, uh, what we expected, but there was a cost incurred, um.
Yep.
And then, you know, other things would be, okay, do you take into consideration the, uh, value of the one that was sold versus the, the new one, do you treat it as some type of, uh, uh, addition and add-on? That its value increases, but if, but if it's, uh, if it's, but if you're downsizing, then, um, in my mind, that would suggest that you might be looking at a lower, uh, tax liability, which would freeze it at that amount. Okay, so you, you move from here to here, and maybe this, the liability on this one was, was here. You, you downsize, you, you lose this credit, but maybe you're resetting at a, at a, uh, a lower assessed value anyway.
So my mind goes to, um, the spirit of the program.
Sure.
So one.
Sure.
So we have, um, and we're not gonna talk about these people.
We, we don't, yeah.
I'm just gonna be, I'm gonna talk in general.
Yeah.
So, you know, the applicant, uh, last year was the first year they could sign up.
Yes.
Is that correct? And, uh, the senior that, um, the state, and we are trying to help out, being frozen at twenty-four values. And then for whatever reason, they need to sell, have to sell, want to sell, uh, for downsizing purposes, or they just want to move. And, um, so they're, you know, they're in the system at twenty-four. They buy a new place, um. Could we freeze the new place at twenty-four, at whatever it was at twenty-four times? What does that look like, how do we?
Well, you no longer occupy that home, so that check mark now is erased, cause you don't occupy that.
The one that they had.
That's, that's, that's correct, so, um.
And the one that they had, I'm not even thinking about, that's for whoever comes into it.
Right, right.
I'm thinking, we're talking about the one they buy.
That, that's coming into the same thing, then, what you just said there, you're not even thinking about that one, because that's whoever comes into it. If this one here wasn't bought and occupied before and or on January one, then it's still for whoever, however it comes into it. You're saying the same thing.
You could potentially run into, was the occupied house assessed at a senior tax freeze from somebody you bought it from, or were they under sixty-two?
It's a little, and, 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 yes, I can see where that could really come up someplace.
Yeah, where one, one his purchase bought in there and everything by the deadline date, cause still gotta have a start and stop, like Randy had said earlier. And on the other one wasn't until later.
And, and Eric, I guess I'd like to address the, the intent. We were one of the very first counties in Missouri that stood up and said, "We want to offer this program for those who are eligible." And as a result of that, we, we kinda blazed our own, own path on it. So we've always, as a commission, we've always looked at this as to, uh, how, how can those who want to apply, uh, benefit from this? And we're not creating obstacles, but we have to have some, we have to have something to guide us in that, in that process. So we don't end up, uh, with one-offs, and this one was done this way, and this one was done that way. So we had to establish some, some parameters or guideline. Will other counties do differently, will other counties interpret Senate Bill seven fifty-six differently? Sure. But does that make theirs any more beneficial than ours? There may be reasons why theirs wouldn't be as beneficial as ours. You know, there's questions that counties have, how do you determine the eligibility year? So in speaking to our county attorney, he will, he will tell you one thing, and there's counties that, that won't accept that, uh, legal opinion. Okay, so even among those who've been very active in, in the, uh, in, in this legislation have different opinions. And so, uh, we're gonna continue to encounter those. You know, one of the things I would like to propose, uh, as we go forward, and, and we work on it, uh, there, there's another county in doing research that, uh, you don't have to apply every year. And how we can make that work, I don't know, but that's something we need to look at. They're always subject to audit, and we have to keep that in mind. Any of these are subject to audit by those who oversee the, the programmer, maybe those who are, uh, impacted by the program. One, one way or the other. So that's something that intrigues me, how, how do we, how do we make that happen? And then how do we, how do we track that through the system? Will that be, um, require less man-hours? Yes, on the surface, what, what does it look like in the assessor's office? And I think that's one thing we don't, we don't see necessarily. Because as, as these go over there, there's additional, uh, man-hours that are invested in making sure that, that these qualify in the right check, check line. We, we had to, uh, it's, we, we, we had to have the programmer add twenty-five as an eligibility year. Cause prior was twenty-three and twenty-four. So when we started this year, all these applications that came in that they wouldn't be eligible till twenty-five, there wasn't any way to mark them. So we were taking applications without any way to mark them in the system that they were twenty-five. So we would have to hang on to those until next year, and, and either ask them to fill out the application again, which currently we do, right? So it'd be a renewal, but it wasn't renewing anything, it would have been treated as a new application. So I mean, there are just so many aspects of this, that as we work through it, we have been, uh, very thoughtful in my, my, of how we view it from the senior. I don't, I don't know if Randy's old enough, but from, from the senior perspective, I mean, I'm sixty-two, I don't want Randy to know.
I am.
But, uh, but for those of us in the room that are.
He likes having sales in the room with him.
So anyway, uh, decision.
Well, if we're gonna keep it clean and as black and white as we can, then. That's gonna have to be them.
Yeah, okay, alright, put them in this stack. Here's another one that happened. Uh, should not have been approved in twenty-four. There's one that slipped through the cracks. Which is gonna happen? You know, you, you process two thousand plus applications, and, and, uh, as many eyes as you have looking on those.
It says neither, but I only see one. Or, okay.
Neither was. Neither was old enough or armed.
What's SS doing?
Social Security.
What's that have to do with?
As long as you have criteria.
Yeah.
In the initial state of it, and beyond social security, and or, the initial state was seven, yeah. One ninety-seven, fifty-six, twenty-seven, six. But it was already frozen, and they kept it at that, which would actually attest for what they just made.
Yeah, so it was frozen, uh, last, last year, um, they weren't old enough, apparently. Or they, or somebody looked at social security and said, okay, they're eligible for social security, but, but maybe they weren't sixty-two. You know, cause there was questions about that last year, if I'm on social security, uh, disability, um, and.
And we cut it off in May, you have to be sixty-two by May, so maybe sixty-two later.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, if they wouldn't. It's gonna be a tough call, but I mean, that's a phone call, everyone just have to explain it to them on how that was.
So when I call, you want me to say, um, Eric or Joe?
It doesn't matter, you want me to call?
I'll call. I just wanna make sure.
Eric's easy.
I just wanna make sure that, um, that the, the decision that's presented or, or determined at this table is, um, is a unanimous, um, decision, so.
That's my answer.
It has to be, that's, I mean, that's just the way that it's written and the way things are, you know? You gotta keep it all the same for each and everybody, I mean, there's no, yeah.
And that may only be the first time something like that happened, right?
Correct.
Alright, this one was, uh, I believe Lady was here previously and made contact, and I, I called and asked them to come back in. But this is where there was, um, so, a, uh, a, a remodel and refurbishment on a property. It needs to be two parcels, and they need to identify one or the other. They've not done that yet, uh, it wouldn't be up to us to identify that.
Right.
So if I give them a call, and they don't come in by May thirtieth, then, uh, is that, uh, would that be our opinion that they do not want their application approved?
They definitely want a courtesy call for sure.
Oh, all, all of them will get a courtesy call, yeah.
To get that, have that opportunity, and I, I feel they are wanting something done, or.
And that's been extended, I've talked to mother and daughter.
Yep.
And, uh.
I remember.
And they haven't been back in yet.
So, yeah, it, it just need to be defined on which home, which residence on that property.
Absolutely, one, there's two homes on that property, which one, which one do you live in?
Correct.
Correct. Why? Oh, all of these are new, all, all these are gonna get a phone call.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna, the ones that are the age, I'm gonna go back over and say, Melinda, is there another reason why that these even came over to us? Okay, and then we're gonna have, um, three here where individuals, uh, were either married or not married. And one of the individuals is now deceased, and the other individual would not have been on the deed. So then I think this becomes, uh, a matter of, when we get to the, the language that says you have a legal or equitable interest. So you've been married to this person, or you've not been married to this person, but you, but it's known that you're eligible in all other ways. And that's even open for interpretation, you know, if, uh, is, is their name, uh, on their paying taxes? But I need to take a short break while you guys look at those three.
I'll second that.
But those in, are actually in that same category.